Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 13th General Meeting of the Clifton Board of Education. Please rise for the flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Shahada.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bassford.
Here.
Mr. Brunsack.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Dr. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Ms. Suarez.
Here.
Vice President Santiago.
Here.
President Perez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Did you announce, Mr. Canova? Did you call that? Oh, yeah, I got you.
Bear with me one moment, please. My computer decided to log myself out. Okay. The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be recorded in accordance with policy 0168. We do have an executive session planned for this morning. We're going to be discussing legal matters. Action may or may not be taken. Motion to adjourn to executive session will take approximately an hour. Motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brunsack.
Excuse me, Alan. I have to recuse myself because I'm in conflict going into executive session. I want the record to reflect that. Thank you.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you, Commissioner Bassford.
Do we have to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Good enough amount of votes.[251.84]
Okay, welcome back from our executive session. Sorry that we are a little bit later than anticipated. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bassford?
Present.
Mr. Brunziak?
Here.
Mr. Knova?
Here.
Dr. Danny?
Here.
Mr. Mahia?
Here.
Mr. Paris?
Here.
Mr. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Siano?
Here.
Ms. Suarez?
Absent. Okay, I am looking for a motion to approve the investigation report and findings completed by Skorancey and Hollenbeck.
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Mahia, seconded by Commissioner Brunsiac. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bassford?
I have to recuse myself for the Skorancey-Hollenbeck investigation because it involved me.
Mr. Brunziak?
Yes.
Mr. Knova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
No.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Did I do Mr. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Paris?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Is our student representative here this evening? Jenna, please welcome Jenna and have a seat at our table.
Good evening. I want to take the time to congratulate all those who were re-elected and congratulate your successful campaigns in this election cycle, Mr. Santiago, Mr. Brunziak. And also congratulations to our own CHS alumni, Mr. Ragsdale, for becoming the youngest elected official in Clifton. I am happy to report that we had many successful events, including first, our senior sunrise, which was held on October 10th at CHS where seniors gathered together and enjoyed the sunrise before homeroom. There were some suggestions made by the class to, in the future, extend the time of the event and start earlier. Next, we had the CHS Open House held on October 21st where staff and students welcomed middle school students to the high school and promoted CHS and programs offered. Last, we had our Halloween Extravaganza hosted on October 29th where various clubs and organizations came out to perform as well as hand out treats and crafts to younger students. The Student Council is also hosting a food drive for CHS students this week and is collecting donations daily for food pantries in Clifton. Next, CHS will be performing Anne of Green Gables for their fall play tomorrow, Saturday, and Sunday, and we invite all Clifton residents to come out for the production and support the program. We also had our first superintendent ambassadors meeting last month where there was feedback from students to promote techless days, where teachers would not ask students to use Chromebooks throughout the schools for one day out of the marking period in addition to wellness days. Students note an increasing reliance on technology from teachers that is not always aiding the students. However, there were reports that the new phone policy has been helpful this school year in seeing more socialization and productivity in the classroom. Thank you all, and that is all for this month's report.
Thank you, Jenna.
Jenna, you did half of my report, so thank you very much. You highlighted all the great stuff. Thank you.
Okay, this moves us to the, our section on presentation of reports. We have a special recognition this evening. I'd like to give the floor over to Mr. Tom Whittles, who's the president of Clifton Against Substance Abuse.
Thank you. First, I want to thank this board for... Your commitment to CASA and the programs that we run. Since Dr. Obitazi's come on board, it's been a great, great relationship, a partnership. And we've done some good things. CASA is, you know, we had some rough roads in the past and we're, we're back in, back in the good swing of things. And tonight, we're going to make a presentation to Leal Hawani from our Health Department, who has taken on the role of the vapor, the vape czar. You know, Leal has, you know, two years ago when we started, a year and a half ago when we started talking about the posters and the poster contests and the banners. Banners are up on the three middle schools and the Board of Ed building, the Escape the Vape banner. Two weeks ago, we did a presentation at City Hall. The numbers are staggering for what she's doing, staggering. They're out doing, entering smoke shops with minors to purchase product, issuing fines. She deserves all the accolades. She has spoken before 1,300 students. She's met all the fourth grade kids. The vape, vaping in the city is out of control. And we would, we would be way behind the eight ball if it wasn't for the Health, the Clifton Health Department. Leal, even in, even in her months of maternity leave, they continued to do what they needed to do to combat this. She has brought in the State Division of Taxation, the Enforcement Bureau. They've confiscated product. But without further ado, I'm going to ask Leal to join me on the, on the... It's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for that, Tom. I'm truly honored. We could not do what we do without the partnership of CASA, truly. Your collaboration, your outreach, and your dedication have and continue to make a difference in the lives of people impacted by substance use. And it's my honor to work alongside other people who care so deeply about the well-being of our city. I also have to express my gratitude to the Clifton Public Schools for being such a phenomenal partner in prevention. The administrative, administration, Superintendent Robert Tozzi, Supervisor of Counseling Services, Jessica Tremble, our school nurses, our school counselors, teachers, everybody has been so great to work with. And everyone is committed to doing what's best for our students. As Tom said, the collaboration we've had has allowed us to reach well over 1,000 students since last year through vaping prevention education. So unfortunately, our kids are growing up in a time when vaping and other substances are constantly being marketed to them, usually in ways that make them seem harmless. But we know the truth, that these products can and do lead to addiction and impact their health and their futures. Our mission is to protect our youth by giving them the facts and also ensuring that our establishments in Clifton are following state tobacco laws and local ordinances. I have to say that one of the most meaningful parts of this work happens after the presentation when students feel comfortable to come to us after, you know, after our, you know, education to talk. Some share their concerns about the impact of vaping on their bodies. Others share concerns about all of the vape shops that they pass on their way home from school. And others open up about family and friends. I've had students in tears, you know, not sure what to do because they're concerned about them. And it's those conversations that are especially validating. And it shows that this work is truly resonating with our youth as young as fourth grade. They're smart, they're thinking critically, they're asking questions, and they truly care about their health and the people that they love. I also want to emphasize that prevention, as you know, is really a team effort. We can't do what we do without our partnerships like CASA and all of you. Parents, I encourage you to talk openly with your children, even if it does get uncomfortable, and to follow your gut if something doesn't feel right. Just last week, I received a call from a concerned parent regarding an establishment here in Clifton that they thought was selling flavored vapor products, which are illegal. And sure enough, they were, and that has been addressed. Educators and school staff, I encourage you to notice changes in your students and listen if they are struggling with vaping. If you are in need of resources, the Clifton Health Department and CASA will always be there to assist. Finally, to our community members, our tobacco establishments, you need to do your part to protect our youth. Check ID, do not sell flavored vapes or other illegal substances because we will continue to check and ensure accountability. To conclude, I would like every parent and caregiver and school employee to know that the youth that I speak with are not just students that I educate, but I look at them as my own children too. I'm a mom to two boys. And we want nothing more than for our youth to feel empowered, to make healthy decisions, to thrive and take control of their future. So thank you again so much, Tom, CASA, Judy, everybody here. And I assure you that we will continue this great work. Thank you and have a great night.
That's good, Dr. Obitazi.
Two weeks ago, she got a plaque. Today, she gets flowers. We don't have a budget for more plaques. But I do want, I also, I'd be remiss, Dr. Obitazi, if I didn't thank Mike Doctor. He's been, he's been really, you know, a cheerleader for us. Yes, he has. Anything I've asked, he's, he's, you know, was able to get it done, including the banners up on, up on the board. Michael, thank you.
Guy I count on too. Tom, Mr. Whittles, just had a quick question and let you go because I know we have a lot on the agenda. But one of the issues that I had heard about a couple of years ago was that some of these vape shops were willing to accept the fines because the fines were so low that it really wasn't preventing them from stopping selling this. Has that been addressed at the city level?
It's being addressed at the city level, not only at the city level. I actually have a Zoom call on Monday with Rosie, Assemblywoman Begali. We're going to the state. We need, the city can't do anything without the state helping us. So we're going to go to the state. We've already had, we've already spoken to Senator McKean's office. And now we have a call on Monday with Rosie Begali's office. Nobody was doing anything during the election process. I mean, they were trying to get elected. But she's elected now, so we're going to put the squeeze on her. If there's anything that we can do as a district to support that, please let us know. Thank you both. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Leal, and Mr. Whittles, and all of CASA for all you do for, to keep our children safe. Such an important educational process, and it's truly appreciated. Next, under presentations, I'd like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Ms. Janina Kusalevich, who will be speaking about our New Jersey CUSAC district performance. Floor is yours, Janina.
Wherever you are.
I keep forgetting about the sitting instead of standing to present. There's one somewhere. There used to be. Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here with you again this evening. Tonight, we are just doing a quick review of our submission of our NJCUSAC data. What is NJCUSAC? It is called the Single Quality Single Accountability Continuum, which is the main monitoring process for school districts for the state of New Jersey. Districts must attain a minimum of 80% in five areas: fiscal, personnel, instructional, operations, and governance. We were part of the first cohort in 2007, and we have been monitored every three years since that time. We submit a self-assessment called a district performance review, and then the executive county superintendent comes to meet with us. Our steering committee includes the members listed here. Each of the five areas is led by one of our central office leaders. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Shahada, runs the fiscal management component. Director Louis Ross, the personnel component. I review the instruction component. Director, Mr. Doctor, reviews the operations component, and our superintendent, Dr. Robert Tozzi, reviews the governance component. The fiscal review covers everything under finance, from monthly reports to the standard operating procedures and CAFR, to all elements of the annual audit, federal grants, capital projects, long-range facilities plan, county office approval for emergent projects, health and safety reviews, all relevant budget components, how the budget is run, including transferring of funds, having a buildings and grounds supervisor with the appropriate licenses, preparing the cash flow management for all funds, and approving purchases as the purchasing agent. The personnel indicators review evaluation, professional learning, provisional certification, staffing, position control, supervision, and feedback. In both of those areas, fiscal and personnel, we submit our internal review as 100% compliant. In instruction and program, instruction and program is a little more complicated. Indicators one through seven are out of our control. They make up 60%. They used to make up 30%, then 40. Now they make up 60% of our review. And they are based entirely on state assessments. They are based entirely on one moment in time for students out of a full school year of learning, and we do not control any of it. We can influence it based on the quality of our curriculum, but we do not control it. So when we submit our internal review, we actually don't have the scores yet that the state is going to give us. So we can actually only submit a 40% of the 100 points we could gain because we're waiting to hear from the state how they're going to score us on the other 60%. And that's only on state testing, graduation rate, and what they call school quality, the measure of school quality, is chronic absenteeism. Indicator eight, we control that. That's when I come and speak to you a couple of times a year, reviewing our local and state assessment data. The 40% is the vast majority of the instruction and program review, which is a review of every single one of our 182 curriculum guides, all of the related pacing, instructional materials, local assessments, lesson plans, professional development, absolutely everything that has to do with instruction everywhere. And somehow, that is only worth 40 points. The operations DPR oversees, it's like the catch-all DPR. The operations DPR oversees, it's like the catch-all DPR, its policies, safe and school environment, positive climate, our MOA with law enforcement, any reporting to the Department of Child Services or institutional, school health services, home instruction, transportation, policies and procedures for tag, and submitting and reporting accurate data. That one is also going in as 100% because we control the entire entity. And with governance, this is under Dr. Robert Ozy. Again, this one goes in as 100%. The board performs its duty evaluating Dr. Robert Ozy. Contracts are approved only after Executive County reapproval. Action is only taken based on the chief school administrator's recommendation. The board reviews and approves corrective action plans. The board budget process is aligned with instructional priorities and student needs, and there is a transparent budget process in place. There is compliance with stakeholder engagement for federal grants. Programs and services are available for multilingual learners. We follow the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. All board actions are publicly available by the next board meeting. We comply with school ethics. Board meetings reflect board actions by the next board meeting, and the board ensures that students have access to a diverse library and media center, kind of a catch-all as well. What is our timeline? The steering committee has met, and subcommittees are completing the DPRs, which are going to be approved and uploaded at this, approved at this board meeting and uploaded tomorrow. That self-evaluation data gets sent to the Department of Education in January through March. The county superintendent will verify our self-assessment and perform inspections, visits, review of the documents. And at some point by the end of the school year, we should receive public notification of their agreement or disagreement with our self-assessment. And that is all. Any questions?
Just want to confirm, this is every three or four years, this CUSAC eval?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was, I thought I messed something up.
Every three or four years, this CUSAC eval?
Every three years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Kusalevich.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move now to Board Committee Reports, and we'll start with the Booster Club Committee and Commissioner Bastard, please.
The board, the Booster Club, met on October 15th. In attendance were Dr. Robert Ozy was out sick, Mr. Shahada ran the meeting. From administration was Mr. Shahada, President Allen Paris, myself, Dr. Lucy Danny, and Commissioner Mark Brunsack. We opened the meeting with introductions around the room, representatives from cheer, lacrosse, football, ice hockey, track, soccer, boys and girls, baseball, the Board of Ed, CHS, administration, and School Six Administration. We talked about the concession stands. All the stands are painted, doing the floors after the football season, installed on Monday, October 20th. All new equipment, not changing the footprint, just a facelift. Paula Moore sent out signup sheets to the groups. The groups also work, who worked the snack stands, yield the profits, waiting on recommendations from the Board of Ed on how to proceed with moving forward regarding a cashless payment, what the options are. Sure, if it's got to be run by Paula or a third party. Use Pomtonian, so there's some decisions that have to be made. Likely better to go back to Paula to stock the stands and handle the signups and the payments. The bleachers are good, weatherproof, and no more leaks inside. They worked on the traffic pattern to enter and the snack stand lines. Fuse and breaker blew at the last football game, and the speaker were not working, but it's been fixed since then. The bathroom stalls not closing correctly, that was going to be addressed by Mr. Shahada, was going to look into it the following day. We spoke about fundraising. The Booster Clubs are standalone and raise their own funds with their organizations. Ideas include Leading Edge, which is phenomenal, better than SNAP raise. They sent Mr. Shahada and DOK, all links to the blast out to the community. Spirit Ware doesn't make a lot of money. It costs, the cost of the merchandise is very high, but people want it, so they still pursue that. They buy their own press, printing press to make their own, they talked about buying their own printing press to make their own clothing and space for storage. We talked about Squad Locker, full online sale, delivered right to the customer's house, but pay for shipping and low profits. We also talked about updates for the Good Over the Order, the Boys Soccer Sunday at 11:15 at Wayne Hills, and the Band Feast was a conflict. They all worked that out, they talked about that amongst themselves. Remember that the board members that do attend this are advisory, we don't, we don't make, it's Dr. Robert Ozy's committee, so we don't, we just listen, and we bring things back to the board, to the respective committees. There's a raffle tricky tray license for the district, non-transferable to the organizations to the next one, but the group can sponsor another group if they work around it. So they talked about fundraising, tricky tray licenses, and things like that. They talked about vinyl senior signs, where they come from. It seems like each of the groups use their own vendors, and they talked about electric bike safety, any grants for buying our children helmets. There was a big discussion about there are some children in the district that need helmets, so if anybody can find the heart to find some helmets for, I believe it was the soccer team, right? Correct? They could use them, and you could see Jen Algeri. So we gave her suggestions about contacting maybe the Health Department, or the Clifton Police Department, or CEF. So thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Knova.
So I had a question. This is waiting for recommendation from Board of Ed, how to proceed with moving forward, moving forward with?
Paula Moore with the, how to, there's an issue with the payments. A lot of people now don't have cash on them, right? So we have to have some kind of electronic conveyance. So they have to work out the kinks about where the money's going to go, where it's going to be deposited. So that's something administration is working on.
But they're nonprofits themselves?
Not the, not the woman that runs, the woman that runs the actual stand, it goes, she runs it and organizes it and goes out and gets the supplies. What happens, it's really interesting, she sends out an email blast, does anybody want to work? When people work the stands, they get credit for how many hours they actually work the stand. So at the end, after she tallies everything up, she divides up the money. The problem is, you can't just funnel that money to one organization because then it's going to mess up their books. Because then they have to, they have to write reports. So the administration is working with Paula to figure out how they can take a noncash app, and whose name it has to go into and where it has to be funded to. So there's some, there's some legality, so they have to work it out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bastard. Next up is our committee report from Residency, Security, and Technology, and that's Vice President Santiago.
Thank you, President Paris. The Residency, Security, and Technology Committee meeting took place on Thursday, October 30th, and began at 5:04 PM. In attendance from administration were Mr. Doctor, Ms. Anola, and Mr. Mountain. Board of Education members in attendance were myself, Commissioner Knova, Commissioner Siano, and President Paris. Mr. Doctor explained that 13 additional Clifton students were removed due to not being Clifton residents for savings of $235,592 since the last meeting. School year-to-date savings is $598,042. Residency investigations are continuing for various groups. The topic of cell service in schools was discussed, and Mr. Mountain will be contacting various providers to see what can be done as it is a safety concern. The meeting adjourned at 6:33 PM. Any questions?
Commissioner Knova.
Just one concern, on the executive version of these minutes, there's supposed to be attachment here that I don't see.
I believe that was emailed. Is that right?
Did that go out to everybody?
We'll, we'll recheck on that.
Right? Yeah, Mr. Doctor emailed that.
We'll recheck and resend it if.
We have an executive later if we have to discuss it. Okay.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Next is our committee report from Education and Special Education Committee Minutes, and that would be Commissioner Dr. Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President Paris. The committee met on October 8, 2025. The meeting began at 6:00 PM present, were myself, President Allen Paris, Commissioner Suarez, and Commissioner Knova. From administration was Dr. Robert Ozy, Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Kusalevich, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Doctor, Director of Operations, Ms. Rotolo, Director of Special Services, Ms. Vuitolo, Principal for School Number Two, Yvonne Tavara, Teacher, Dr. Miro Drew, Caldwell Inter, and again, I guess, Mr. Doctor, Director of Student Support Services. General Education Updates, Ms. Kusalevich. The NJDOE is mandating that all districts pilot a new NJSLA adaptive exam. This is a repackaged exam from the consortium that sponsored the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which was the original competition to the Old Park exam. Students in grades three to eight and taking end-of-course tests in Language Arts, nine, Algebra, Geometry and Algebra II will be tested on previously learned material to validate the questions. We will not receive any student data from this field test. Action informational. Special Education Update, Ms. Rotolo. Ms. Rotolo provided an update on special education. Ninety referrals have been received by the Special Education Department thus far this year. Fifty preschool and forty for school-age students. There's an increase in need for psychiatric and bilingual evaluations due to behavioral issues and mental health concerns. We've asked NJDOE for class-size waivers for several classes due to larger groups, students' needs, and staffing. Nearly all classes are full at this time. Clifton has never asked for class-size waivers before. A collaboration of Clifton Health Department and Parent Support Group was canceled due to lack of attendance. The first CPAG Special Education Parent Advisory Group meeting will be held on November 18, 2025, 6:00 PM virtually. Parents can email rzamora@cliftonschools.net for the link. We have planned our parent workshops for autism classes with our behavior experts. We continue to work with UConn and SPAN on the EPATH projects to increase parent engagement. We're engaging in training for the new WJ5 rollout. Special Education Supervisors Department will be participating in the Halloween Extravaganza 10/29/25. We will be attending Clifton Health Department Disability Fair this weekend at the Boys and Girls Club. A reading specialist will be, will be provided, will provide the child study teams APD on Reading 10/15/2025. Action informational. Overseas Trip discussed with Attorney Feedback, Dr. Robert Ozy, the previous EF Tours trip was not district-sponsored. Mr. Hamda, CHS Principal, and Ms. Tavara, Teacher and Chaperone Support, bringing the trip under district sponsorship by making it a school-sponsored trip. It allows for fundraising in the district. Legal counsel advised that the liability is similar, whether school-sponsored or not. Being district-sponsored allows more control over the trip by applying the school rules and allows for us to have a code of conduct signed. Our insurance company advised that we would need a rider as long, that we would not need a rider as long as this is a BOE-sponsored trip. The Education Committee agreed to move forward to full board meeting agenda. Action Item 11/13/2025, BOE agenda. Safety Patrol Proposal and Busing Cost Alignment. From Maggie, Ms. Vuitolo presented information about the Safety Patrol fifth-grade trip to Washington, DC. In 2024 to 2025, 167 patrols participated at a cost of 650 per student funded entirely by families. The cost of the Safety Patrol trip has increased to 750 per student due to rising expenses. This trip remains a valuable and enriching experience for our students and is fully staffed by Clifton chaperones. The Patrol Committee is requesting that the board consider covering $20,000 toward the cost of busing, consistent with the support provided for the Mustang Band. While this is, has not been budgeted for this year, they respectfully ask that the board consider it for next year to be included in the district budget. At this time, funding options will be explored to help defray the increased $100 per student. Action informational. Federal Funding Update Impact for Proposed Federal Budget Cuts by Ms. Kusalevich. She shared an update on federal funds, which were initially held by the US DOE in Title II, Title III, Title IV, and the 21st Century Learning Centers. New Jersey filed a lawsuit to fight this withholding, which would have been over $1 million for Clifton. While these funds have been restored, our full ESCA allocation was reduced. We anticipated receiving the same amount as 2024, 2025, which is $5,732,393. While the titles were reinstated, reductions to Title I and Title IV led to a total reduction of $645,066, resulting in an allocation of $5,87,327. In the 2627 federal budget, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and 21st Century Learning Centers have been budgeted as zero. We've been informed of potential significant reductions to Title I and IDEA in the following year as well. This year's loss led to limiting after-school tutoring hours and not hosting a Saturday Title I program. The potential loss of the zeroed-out titles should be considered in budget planning for the 2627 year. Plans for cuts in Title I and IDEA need to be examined. Action informational. Adult Evening School Pilot Implementation Program. Ms. Kusalevich shared plans for piloting a fully fee-driven expansion of adult evening schools. The Title I, Title III adult ESL will continue in February so long as federal funds remain. In collaboration with the Aspiring Administrators Academy, surveys are going out in November, both for topics and presenters. Aspiring administrators will take on this project to promote the program via Google Form and district social media. Registration will be advertised in early winter, with selected courses running mid-year. Classes which receive sufficient enrollment to sustain the cost will run, others will be refunded. The courses will be six- to 10-week courses based on course type. The program will be examined once the pilot concludes to determine next steps. Action informational. Meeting ended at 7:08, respectfully submitted by Ms. Kusalevich. Any questions?
Commissioner Bastard.
Thank you for exploring the pilot for the adult evening school. When I first moved to Clifton, that's how I met people, and I, I learned how to golf with my dad from the Clifton Evening School.
Yesterday, we had an Administrator Academy, Mrs. Bastard, and we already have cadets working on it. So it's going to come to fruition. As long as there's interest out there, it will happen.
Perfect, thank you. That's wonderful.
Commissioner Knova.
So I know this took place in October, but do we have any update on our, our funding? No, same?
The funding comes out in July, so the federal, the Congress has to pass their budget. The budget that was referred to by Dr. Danny is the budget that comes from the White House. They submit their budget to Congress, and then Congress then goes on and modifies it and, you know, they horse-trade back and forth until we fund the government. But we won't know until July. I think this year, Janina, correct me if I'm wrong, we found out in like August, right? We found out really late because, you know, all the, everything was just crazy, but.
So that stays zero until they tell us indifferent?
Correct. They said expect zero. I heard that, you know, down in Trenton, to expect zero, but who knows?
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner, here.
So even though our funds were reinstated, the full amount was reduced that we got back, basically, correct?
Yeah, I think it was 640,000 less than, than last year.
So in total, Title II, III, and IV gave us about $5 million? So we should expect not having those $5 million this upcoming July or August?
Correct. Yeah, we usually budget for, I believe. Correct. Yeah, we usually budget for, I believe, we're typically told, similar to state, budget 80%. So this year, we're going to budget zero and hope for the best. You know, we'll find out in June. That's all I can really, or July, rather. That's all I got for you guys.
All right, thank you.
Vice President Santiago.
So Commissioner Mahia basically said what I was going to ask. But so we reduced roughly the 640, which what we ended up doing was limiting after-school hours and then eliminating a Saturday Title I program because of that. And so if, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, but potentially, this is a $5 million deficit, which would potentially, you know, substantially impact the district, would probably hurt students if it's $5 million, right?
These are the students that are in most need, in high-poverty areas, English as a second language, undocumented students, you know, all of that stuff. So we'd have to, we have an obligation to provide them with a thorough and efficient education. So we're going to have to collectively figure it out. There is really no other option.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Moving on to public recognition. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested to sign the register provided for this purpose and to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. So I would like to start. Is there anyone online? Matthew, by any chance?
There are not this evening.
Motion to close?
Motion to close by Commissioner Brunsack, seconded by Commissioner Mahia. I would now invite anyone who'd like to speak and address the Board to come forward. Seeing no one, oh, seeing someone. Welcome, Elias.
Thank you. Good evening to the public. Board Commissioners, Dr. Robertozzi and all watching. There you go. All right. Good evening to the public. Board Commissioners, Dr. Robertozzi and all watching. Just a year ago, I was here before the Board of Education thanking the voters for an election I ultimately did not win. And tonight, I stand here incredibly grateful because I've now been chosen and given the opportunity to serve on this Board. Even though this race was uncontested, I am so proud of the results and the turnout. To me, these numbers and the energy of this town reflect something very important. A mandate and approval from residents of Clifton that it's time for new leadership, a new spirit of leaders, and a new generation stepping up for our residents and our schools. To be elected at 19 makes me the youngest elected official in our city's history, and it is truly an honor of a lifetime. I've studied, worked, campaigned twice, and I've dedicated myself to understand how to best serve this community. I look forward to joining the Board officially on January 6 and working with you, working with you, listening to residents, teachers, and students, and ultimately doing everything I can to move our schools forward. I'll save the four remarks for the swearing-in, but wanted to send a general thank you and extend my appreciation to the community for their support and love to those and the many that reached out. So have a great night, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Elias. Anyone else who would like to address the Board? Okay, seeing none. Motion to close by Commissioner Brunsack, seconded by Commissioner Mahia. Next is adoption of our minutes from our October 9, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brunsack. Roll call, please. Mr. Shahada.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion? Yeah, I'm sorry. All right, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Ms. Basford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Here.
Yes.
Ms. Shahano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll now turn the floor over to Superintendent Robertozzi for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Good evening, Board Commissioners and members of the One Clifton Community. It's an honor to be here with all of you tonight. It's nice to see so many staff members here tonight supporting each other. We have two pretty significant appointments on the agenda tonight, so I have an opportunity to hear from you shortly, guys. It's coming. It's coming. Just like to share my pride regarding our first ever, maybe not first ever, but our first district-sponsored community food drive, which occurred on November 5. To say it was a success is not enough. Spearheaded by our Assistant Superintendent of Business, Mr. Shahada, we distributed over 3,500 meals to families in need in our community. And there are families in need in our community, in case people didn't know that, okay? We also donated an additional 100 meals to the Clifton Health Department. Just want to remind everyone and remind the community that there will be another food, community food drive tomorrow night at Clifton High School from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I will be there tomorrow. I wasn't able to attend the last one, but I'll be there tomorrow. And two of my daughters wanted to come with me to volunteer, which I really appreciated and made me very proud. So I'll be there tomorrow night with two of my kids. I'd like to go over a couple of high school highlights that Jenna spoke about. Thank you, Jenna, for highlighting the really great things. Jenna mentioned the Halloween Extravaganza, which by all accounts was a tremendous success. It is every year. It just happens. It always occurred during the week where we're, most of us are at New Jersey School Boards Convention. So I haven't been since the first year it was held, but by all accounts, a tremendous success. And I don't know if Jenna mentioned this, but I want to mention the Clifton High School Mechanical Mustang Robotics Team, which we're always very proud of. They reached an exciting milestone by capturing first place at Ramp Riot 25 in Pennsylvania. Ramp Riot is one of the premier off-season, this is the off-season for robotics, competitions in the entire Mid-Atlantic region. There were more than 30 teams and thousands of spectators. And we won. That's pretty cool. Pretty impressive. It just highlights our students' creativity, our students' teamwork, and of course, their excellence in STEM education. Thank you to our teachers and of course, our volunteers who are involved in the robotics team. And looking ahead, I invite everyone to come to the high school this weekend. Tomorrow evening, the Clifton High School Drama Department will be performing Anne of Green Gables tomorrow, 7:00 PM, Saturday, 7:00 PM, and a Sunday matinee at 1:00 PM. Supporting our arts program is an essential part of nurturing a well-rounded education. I've said this plenty of times. I'll continue to say it. There is a significant amount of research that indicates students who are involved in the arts education, specifically music and art, do significantly better in all other subject areas. So we strongly encourage this. And it's, I think there was only one year I missed the play. Every year, our students never cease to amaze me. Looking forward to seeing the play this weekend. I think I'll be at the Sunday Matinee. Just going to bring some popcorn and candy, but there's, apparently, there's some board policies about not having that in the auditorium. Maybe we could make an exception tonight. I need to eat, Joe. Well, I don't. Actually, popcorn's one of the more healthier snacks I hear. But I divert. I'd like to highlight literacy in our district. Mrs. Kusilevich talked a little bit about CUSAC tonight. And CUSAC is our district's report card. I'm proud to say that three years ago, our district was rated highly effective by the New Jersey Department of Education. It is my expectation that we continue to be rated as a highly effective school district. However, the state does not make it easy considering that 60% of one indicator is based on standardized tests. One test on one day in one particular setting. Those of us who know, know that that's not what education is. That's not what education is about. Is it a measure that we can utilize? Certainly. Is it something that we can use to help perhaps improve instruction? Maybe look at our curriculum and things, but it's not the be-all, end-all. If you want to find out how our children are doing, look at our local data, which Ms. Kusilevich does a great job of presenting every year. So to highlight literacy, our students in the month of September read 17,508 books, totaling over 84 million words. And that achievement reflects not only our students' passion for learning, but the success of all of our district-wide literacy initiatives, including our book vending machines, which are extremely popular. And every school has a book vending machine now. On average, students are reading 15 minutes a day. And while that may not seem much, that's what you need. That's all a student needs. So parents, if your children are reading 15 minutes a day, that small, consistent habit leads to continued growth throughout their life. So please encourage reading at home, and we will do our best at school. Speaking, I mentioned earlier of the New Jersey School Boards Convention. I was honored to represent Clifton School District at the School Board Convention, where I co-presented with my colleague, Dr. Legia Alberto from the University of North Carolina Wilmington. And our presentation was regarding, was titled Creating the Next Leadership Generation: Shared Leadership and Mentorship as Pathways to Belonging and Retention. And basically, what that simply meant was all of the things that we do airing Clifton to create the next generation of administrators, that long after I'm gone, I hope that this is something that lives on in this district. And there is definitely one person here tonight who's on the agenda to be appointed, who's been part of our Administrator Academy. Maybe perfect attendance, Heather, maybe? Close? Oh, come on, Heather. That's okay. For three years, though, maybe you missed one? That's pretty good. Close to it. And so what we're doing is we're taking, we're providing an opportunity for our educators to become leaders on their own. They come once or twice a month on their own time, and they learn about different initiatives. They learn about leadership. They learn about how to do a master schedule. They learn about all sorts of things. And those future leaders, we've had several of them here at our board meetings being appointed to administrative jobs. So we're very proud of that. And that's what my presentation was about. But we also shared survey from the Educators Thriving Survey, which our district completed back in the spring of '25. 1,408 staff members completed this very intensive survey. And without getting too detailed, what I can tell you is that we were very, very happy with the results and impressed by our wellness initiatives in the district, which have both inspired staff and really speak to the strength of our leadership culture. Just one quick example in this survey. One of the questions is, and it's a Likert scale from one to five, and it's just a statement. One, meaning you strongly disagree. Five, meaning you strongly agree. And the statement simply said that my principal trusts me to do my job. Our score on that one question alone was a standard deviation higher than the national average. So thousands and thousands and thousands of educators have taken this survey. And in Clifton, and a standard deviation for us non-math, and I'm a non-math person, that just means it's a statistically significant difference between the national average. So our principals, our district leaders, you guys are doing something right that our staff can say that you trust them to do their job. So thank you for that. That's just one small piece of some very, very positive data. And finally, I want to especially recognize the Clifton High School Open House, which welcomed our future Mustangs, our eighth graders and their families, where our students and families were able to explore our academic programs, clubs, athletics, and career pathways that await them at Clifton High School. Parents, you do not have to send your children anywhere else to get an outstanding education but Clifton High School. The energy and enthusiasm of our future incoming students reminds us that Clifton's future is bright. Of that, I have no doubt. And these moments really reflect the best of who we are. So let's continue to try to get better. Let's continue to be strong and build a stronger community. Thank you, Mr. Paris, and thank you to the Board for allowing me to talk a lot tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Robertozzi. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, we have two proclamations. The first is National Native American Heritage Month. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Canova to please read that.
Whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous people and honor their sacrifices. And whereas Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. And whereas our state and our country is blessed by the character and strength exemplified by the Native Americans who have answered the call of service in our armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. We honor our Native American veterans and those who are service and active duty for their bravery and sacrifice. And whereas during the month of November, we honor our native peoples and recognize that their continued contributions in strengthening the diversity in our society. Now therefore, we, the Clifton Board of Education, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month and encourage the district to observe the month with appropriate events and activities.
Thank you, Commissioner Canova. And our second resolution is condemning hate in all forms. Please read it, Vice President Santiago.
Thank you, President Paris. Condemning Hate in All Forms. Whereas the city of Clifton is home to a diverse and vibrant community composed of individuals from various cultural, ethnic, religious, and social backgrounds. And whereas the Clifton Board of Commissioners, Central Administration, and all staff affirm that all individuals have the right to live, work, and learn in an environment free from hate, discrimination, and intolerance. Whereas recent incidents have reminded us[1657.64] Whereas recent incidents have reminded us that hate and prejudice still persist in our society, manifesting in acts of harassment, violence, and discrimination that affect our community members' well-being and sense of security. And whereas hate not only harms individuals, but also weakens the social fabric of our community, undermining the shared values of respect, inclusivity, and unity that Clifton strives to uphold. And whereas the Clifton Board of Commissioners, Central Administration, and all staff stand firmly against all forms of hate, discrimination, bigotry, and violence, and are committed to fostering a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that Clifton Board of Commissioners, Central Administration, and all staff collectively and unequivocally condemn all acts of hate and discrimination in our community and beyond. Be it further resolved that we affirm our commitment to upholding policies, practices, and initiatives that promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and respect for all individuals, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or socioeconomic status. Be it further resolved that we encourage all community members to stand together against hate, fostering a community where every individual feels valued, supported, and safe. Be it finally resolved that Clifton Board of Commissioners, Central Administration, and all staff will continue to take active steps to support victims of hate and discrimination, work in collaboration with community organizations to promote education and awareness, and ensure that Clifton remains a place of respect, unity, and compassion.
Thank you, Vice President Santiago. I now ask the board for a motion to approve under Section B, Education Administration, Items One through Twelve.
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Danny. Seconded by Commissioner Mahia. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes to everything except EA five. Yes only to P six one-one-one, and yes only to P one-six-four-eight dot one-five.
Mr. Kenova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes, but abstaining on my name only, number four, item four. Okay, next up is our Personnel section.
Alan, just for clarification, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Number three, EA three.
Was that separate, Mr. Shah?
Oh, I'm sorry, EA four.
I have four as my name.
Sorry.
No worries. Under Section C, Personnel, seeking a motion to approve Items One through thirty-four, please.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mahia, seconded by, I didn't hear some the other side.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brunsack. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure we give some time to Heather Hall and Linda Chavez if they're here.
We will as soon as we finish voting on this section.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Shahad.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Kenova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes, abstaining on P thirty-two.
President Paris?
Yes, abstain myself on P thirty-one and P thirty-two.
Motion carries.
Okay, next I would invite, who should?
Mr. Paris, if you'd like. Take the floor, please. First, I would like to congratulate Ms. Heather Rotolo on her retirement effective December thirty-first. You always hear that saying, oh, you know, the next person's going to have big shoes to fill. But I will tell you that in my experience, Ms. Rotolo is an outstanding professional in the most difficult job in the district, which is Director of Special Education. Heather, congratulations on your retirement, wish you all the best in the future, and could not be happier to recommend to this board tonight and to have the board vote yes on the appointment of our next Director of Special Education, Dr. Linda Chavez.
Make sure the microphones are down, please. Make sure the microphone, just there you go.
There we go, green light, okay. Good evening, Dr. Robertozzi, President Paris, Vice President Santiago, distinguished commissioners, Mrs. Kusilevich, Mr. Shahada, and Mr. Doctor. Thank you very much for honoring me with this appointment as Clifton's next Director of Special Services. It is a privilege and responsibility that I take very seriously. Dr. Ross Green, a child psychologist and author, wrote, "The quality of a school is measured by the degree to which it is responsive to the developmental variability of its students." This is a district that has proven its commitment to all learners, and I am grateful for this opportunity to lead the Department of Special Services and continue the tradition of delivering excellent educational experiences and pursuing best practice on behalf of every student. The department consists of hundreds of staff and professionals, too many to name right now, but most of whom leave me in awe on a daily basis with their dedication and compassion for our students. I appreciate them all. To my fellow administrators, in particular, the special education supervisors, Bahia Abadraba, Amanda Hempel, Sylvia Matier Rosamelia, Kristen Checki, and Karen Ponse, I learn from you every day, and I am thankful to work alongside you. To our current director, Heather Rotolo, thank you for your leadership, mentorship, and friendship. Congratulations on your retirement, although I will miss seeing you every day. To Clifton parents and guardians, I am committed to this work and delivering the best possible education to your children that we can. Thank you very much.
More flowers, I love it. Congratulations, Dr. Chavez. I would now like to take the opportunity to introduce the new Assistant Principal at School Number Five, Ms. Heather Hall.
Good evening. I would like to begin by sincerely thanking our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Robertozzi, Board of Education President, Mr. Paris, Vice President, Mr. Santiago, Board of Education Commissioners, Central Administration, and Mr. Anderson for recommending me for the position of Assistant Principal at School Five. I am incredibly honored and grateful for your support and confidence in me. I am eager to start this new position and continue to serve the Clifton community in a new capacity. I look forward to building new relationships with students, working alongside the dedicated staff of School Five, thank you to those of you that are here, and further investing in our Clifton communities, I'm sorry, Clifton families. I would not be the educator and educational leader I am today without the knowledge shared at Clifton's Administrator Academy or the invaluable experiences I have been a part of during my time at Clifton High School. I would be remiss if I didn't specifically thank Mr. Hamda, Clifton High School Principal, the entire administrative team at CHS, Mr. Doctor included, and all of my many colleagues over the years. My time at CHS has allowed me to grow into the person I am today. Once again, thank you for this incredible opportunity. I am eager to get started and proud to serve the community in a new role. Thank you.
Congratulations to everyone. All right, next is Finance Facilities, seeking a motion to approve Items One through Ten.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Kenova, seconded by Commissioner Brunsack. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Shahad.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes, I'm abstaining on check five-zero-seven-four, excuse me, five-zero-seven-nine-four-four and five-zero-five-zero-six-three. The rest of it, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Kenova?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Santiago?
Yes, abstain on two-two-four-two-four-eight-two-two-three-nine-six-nine.
President Paris?
Yes, abstain on F-ten, check number two-two-four-two-four-eight and two-two-three-nine-six-nine.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Board Member Comments. We start this week with Commissioner Kenova.
Good evening. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Santiago and Mr. Brunsack on their reelection. Next, I want to congratulate Mr. Ragsdale on his successful election and shattering the record of the youngest Board of Ed member here in Clifton, New Jersey. I look forward to working with all of you. I want to mention, we had many successful trunk-or-treats, that's why I couldn't go down to NJASBA, but that was worth it. The HSAs, I just want to say that, you know, they fundraise and they enrich our schools, so my hat goes off to them. It's a difficult position. If you have the chance to contribute or help out or in any way, you know, please do so. It really does help the students, and they love it, too. Also, congratulations to Ms. Hulwani and her appreciation of CASA. I think that's a, that team is very dedicated and is much appreciated. Ms. Rotolo, congratulations on your retirement. I wish you well in your next chapter. Congratulations to Ms. Chavez. Mrs. Hall, congratulations on your new role as Vice Principal. I just want to let everyone know, Happy Veterans Day, and also Happy Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Up and Coming. Make sure you spend it with your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Phil, and Commissioner Dr. Danny.
Thank you, President Paris. I'd like to say thank you to the student representative for your informational update. Thank you for CASA, thank you to CASA and Lael Hulwani for all you do. Thank you to Ms. Kusilevich for the update on the CUSAC process. You always keep us informed. Congratulations to Mr. Brunsack and Mr. Santiago on your reelection, and Mr. Ragsdale for your election to the board. Congratulations to all those who had a change in employment status, especially to Mr. Doctor, congratulations, Dr. Chavez and Ms. Hall. Ms. Rotolo, thank you for your years of service. Been here and, you know, you obviously, knowing being in education, it is not an easy role, and I wouldn't want to have your job. So thank you for your years of service, and congratulations, and may you have a great retirement. Congratulations, Dr. Robertozzi, on your presentation at New Jersey School Boards. Truly a leader through and through, it's what you do. And Happy Thanksgiving to all, and to all a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Danny. Commissioner Mahia?
Thank you very much, President Paris. I first want to thank President Tom Widdowes, thank you again for coming with that presentation from CASA, very informative, especially because of the way they started taking over. I know it was bad when I was in high school, and I know it got even worse when I got in college, when they banned jewels and all that. And I know even now, you know, you see kids everywhere, you know, I work at a recreation center, and sometimes I see little students coming out of middle schools, high schools all the time with, you know, little jewels. And I think to myself, are they not learning about all the repercussions that come with it? Are they not learning that all these things are bad for your health ultimately? So thank you so much for coming up with that presentation with us today. Briefly, I want to talk and bring up again what's happening with Title One, Two, Three, and Four. As you guys heard before, we got our money back, yes, but the money is extremely less than what we had before. And going forward, as was mentioned in our committee reports, Title Two, Three, and Four is currently budgeted at zero percent by the feds, meaning we are probably not going to get that money, meaning that's going to be an already five-million-dollar operating budget deficit this upcoming school year when it hits July first. As we mentioned before, we might not even see it until August. So we might, you know, budget for not having it at all, but we won't know until August, not even a month before school starts. With that being said, I'm very pessimistic on what's going to be happening as it pertains to the feds, whether they're going to give us this money or not, because at the end of the day, as we heard before, it's already cutting programs and things that we need in our district. So I can only imagine what else it's going to cut this upcoming year. On a more positive note, thank you so much to Mr. Shahad and Dr. Danny Robertozzi on their efforts in hosting this food drive. With everything that's going on in the federal government, it was important to give this to the community in general. So thank you again for that tireless effort you guys put in. Thank you to our staff for giving a helping hand in it. On an even better note, when we talked about the robotics team, the robotics team has been great ever since I was in high school. And just to hear that time and time again, we continue to compete against the best of the best in, not just in New Jersey, but in this country, it's great. It's great to hear that we are leading the way. Going forward from that, I hope to see all you at the fall play. Ms. Pogee is the Director of Fall Play, and I can't wait to see how great of a show this is going to be. A fun fact, she was my elementary school teacher, my middle school teacher, my high school teacher, and my college professor. So I've seen her my entire life and watching her do these plays throughout my entire school career has been amazing, especially these past couple, three years. My favorite one is going to be Into the Woods. But with that being said, a huge congratulations to my former colleagues, I mean, former running mates and colleagues currently, Anthony Santiago, Mark Brunsack, you guys did it amazing. One last thing, I want to congratulate as well Elias Ragsdale, thank you so much for winning. We spoke two years ago when you came up to me and you asked me, what is your why and how did you do this? And I remember when I told you, never let anyone tell you you can't do something and don't give them the pleasure of proving them right. So congratulations on your win. I hope that this path leads to more paths opening up, future generations like us coming in and stepping up to the plate and showing that we can do more, we can do better, and we can bring things to the table. Thank you, have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahia. Commissioner Siano?
Thank you, President Paris. Okay, Mark, Tony, congratulations on your reelection. Elias, youngest elected official in Clifton history, that's something. That's going to be hard for anyone to take away from you, too, at your age, so good job. Keep it up. Looking forward to seeing what you bring to the table. Thank you for the Student Rep Report, Janina for the update on the CUSAC. CASA, thank you for everything that you do. Amazing what you guys, you know, really do for our city. I want to give a big shout-out to my sister Catherine Siano for being named the Passaic County Volunteer of the Year by the Governor's Council on Substance Abuse. That's a big name. I am incredibly proud of her commitment and compassion and dedication. She is an amazing person, keep up the good work. With Thanksgiving approaching, I encourage everyone to reflect on what they are grateful for. My office has been involved in several clothing and food drives recently, and I'm thankful for how our community has come together to support those in need. What have I seen doing these food drives? Times are tough. Dr. Robertozzi, you said it yourself, people are in need, people are hurting. Many people are forced between buying food and paying rent. That's where my struggle comes in when we talk about taxes. Every year through these drives, my work with various programs, I see the faces of those who really need help, and it's not always those who you might think. It's homeowners, renters, people with good jobs who are struggling to make ends meet with rising costs. That's the bigger picture we must address, especially now if we're going to be losing funding. Moving forward, we need to find areas to cut costs and ways to increase revenue. This could mean upping charges for facility use, increasing certain fees, having students fundraise for specific items instead of relying on the district. I believe fundraising builds character and teaches children the value of working for what they want, but that's a conversation for another time. Me personally, this Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for my health this year especially, my wife, my family, and the many people I'm privileged to call friends. I'm grateful for all of you that serve on the board. We dedicate our time to improving the community and our education system. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. If you have nowhere to go, Power One is hosting a free Thanksgiving meal from one to four at the Clifton Garfield Elks Lodge, seven-seventy-five Clifton Ave. Reserve your spot by calling eight-six-two-two-three-nine-five-nine-oh-five. They share my belief that no one should spend Thanksgiving alone. Have a good night, be good to yourselves and each other.
Thank you, Commissioner Siano. Commissioner Suarez?
Thank you, President Paris. Thank you, Commissioner Siano, for your last little comment, it's really nice to share with the community. Good evening, everyone. I want to say congratulations to Mark and Tony, thank you for being here, and I look forward to a great twenty-twenty-six. And Elias, congratulations, I look forward to working with you in twenty-twenty-six as well. I also want to thank everyone who made the Halloween extravaganza happen. My son and I had so much fun being there, and I'm grateful for all the hard work that went into such a big event. It was smooth, fun, and very well organized. Thank you, everyone, it was great. Also, I'm extremely proud to be a part of this community who came together to package foods for hundreds of Clifton families. Thank you to Mr. Shahad, my husband, for supporting the vision of feeding our children and families when they may not have known when and where they were getting food from next. Food insecurity is very real and can happen to anyone. Knowing that so many in our school district came together in support of the community is a beautiful and heartwarming thing. Lastly, to acknowledge National Native American Heritage Month, I would like to read this land acknowledgement. "We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Lenape people, the original inhabitants of this territory and the surrounding region. We honor their continuous presence, their connection to this land, and commitment to representing and recognizing their history and culture." That's all I have for tonight, and Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, be well.
Thank you, Commissioner Suarez. Commissioner Bassford?
Thank you, President Paris. Thank you, Jennifer, very comprehensive report, and Melinda DeChellis says hello, your School Sixteen teacher, she always tells me to say hi to you, so hello, Jenna, from Mr. DeChellis. Thank you to Ms. Kusilevich for a very informative report. Congratulations to the other Siano, Kathy Siano, for your dedication to CASA and receiving the Passaic County Award. You're a very dedicated volunteer, you're very valuable to our organization, everything you do, we need, so way to go, Kathy, way to go. Congratulations to Lael, well deserved, your hard work, we are a better community because of you, the things that you have done really are invaluable. Congratulations to Heather Rotolo. I'm going to miss you, and I thank you for your service to our community, especially the most vulnerable in our communities, thank you for what you do. To Ms. Chavez, many years ago, you used to get a phone call from a very young advocate from the Association for Special Children and Families, and I reached a shake talking to you because you were fierce, but you helped us out and you got us through some tough times, so I look forward to seeing what you're going to do for our community and for the Special Education Department. their support to the Immigration Trust Act S. 3672, A. 4987. This legislation represents an important step towards ensuring that every member of our community feels safe, valued, and protected. Our immigrant neighbors enrich our schools, our neighbors, and our future. Supporting them is not only the right thing to do, it's an investment in strength and unity of our community. That's my personal views and opinions on that one. I don't speak for the board on S. 3672 and A. 4987, so to be clear on that. I would like to also offer a heartfelt congratulations to Commissioner Santiago, Vice President Santiago, and Commissioner Brunziak on your election, and to the youngest Commissioner-Elect Elias Ragsdale. Look forward to working with you in 2026. Public service requires courage, commitment, and compassion, and I look forward to the positive impact you all will make in the future. Attending workshop this year was a true highlight. It was an absolute thrill to watch the Board Member of the Year, Ms. Dana Krug, someone I nominated, deliver her speech. And I'm sorry, Danny, I had to cut you short, but I had to run down to see Dana.
I appreciate your confidence.
Okay, thank you. That makes three for three out of my nominations, receiving their recognitions. And I am incredibly proud and deeply thrilled that Dana from the West Windsor Plainsboro School Board of Education was honored in that way this year by an independent council from Pennsylvania. Her dedication, leadership, and unwavering service to her community are extraordinary. Can I just have a second? And recognition so well deserved. Strength and resiliency are qualities we discover in every moment, Samantha. They revel us in moments that test us, that stretch us, and ask us to rise when standing feels impossible. This is to you tonight. Life has a way of placing obstacles and pushing us down and knocking us out, not to break us, but to show us what we are truly capable of overcoming. Being tested doesn't mean we're weak. Not us bastard girls, we're not weak, right? It means we're human. It means we're being shaped, refined, and strengthened in ways we cannot fully understand until we look back and realize how far we have come. Every challenge faced, every heartbreak survived, every difficult step towards becoming proof of our own resilience. Strength doesn't always roar. Sometimes it's quiet decisions to keep going and to stay when you want to give up. Sometimes it's asking for help. Sometimes it's choosing hope when doubt feels easier. But each time we rise, no matter how slowly, we claim a part of ourselves that hardship tries to shake. I also want to take a moment to thank my family and my small circle of friends that helped me during a very difficult time. Your support is the reason I rise every day. Your love, your patience, your steady presence have carried me through moments when I didn't know how to move forward. You remind me of my strength when I've lost sight of it all and not for what I profoundly am grateful for. So, if you're being tested right now out there, remember you're standing, you're still standing, and so are we. You are growing. You're becoming stronger than you were yesterday. And one day, the very thing that tried to break you will become the reason you know you can conquer anything. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner Bastard. Commissioner Brunziak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to give a big thank you to all the voters for electing me as one of your Board of Ed Commissioners and trusting me to serve our community. Congrats to Vice President Santiago, Mr. Ragsdale. Next, I want to thank you to whomever made the anonymous $17,000 donation to School 14. Absolutely fantastic. Yeah, okay. Sure thing, Dr. Robertozzi. And this is on top of the $25,000 anonymous donation a couple of years ago for the LED board, for the announcement board on the front. So, absolutely generous. And my sources, which is my kids, they're telling me what this is going towards. There's a new playground and it's going towards springy horses, a dome, rubber pad, seesaw, and get ready, alligators as well. So, I'm very happy and grateful for this anonymous donation. There are a lot of children over there with special needs and I'm sure they will be using these items at this new playground. Also, want to give a big shout out to Dave Riley for updating the benches inside the reading garden at School 14. Incredible man. His kids are brilliant too. And if any of his kids helped out, shout out to them too. If his wife, Miss Tara, helped out too, thank you as well. Absolutely wonderful. All the generosity that they provide to the city, especially all they have done for School 14. Thank you, because none of their kids even attend there anymore. Congrats to Heather Rotolo on your retirement. I'm very happy for you and I'm also very jealous of you, but I hope to be soon. Hope to be retiring soon as well. Finally, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for your time and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunziak. Vice President Santiago.
Thank you, President Paris. Ms. Rotolo, happy retirement. Thank you for all you've done. Well deserved. Ms. Chavez, Ms. Hall, congrats. We look forward to your dedication to our students. Thank you for all you do. Our robotics team, congrats. You keep repping Clifton. You guys are amazing. I wanted to point out that on October 22nd, Clifton High School marketing students attended the Sports Business Day at MetLife hosted by the Jets. And our students explored a wide range of career opportunities in sports business through presentations and discussions with members of the Jets organization, as well as gaining firsthand insight into the operations of a major professional sports venue. So, that's awesome to everybody involved in that. Let's keep doing things like that. It's amazing. Yep, go out and see Anne of Green Gables this weekend. I think I'm going to try and maybe join you on that matinee on Sunday. Maybe I'll drag my wife. Casa, this time we're going to drag. Tom, Casa, Lial, I'm glad we have a vaping czar. We need to counter that marketing with education and we need to start young and we need to be consistent. Vaping is a tremendous problem that gets younger and younger. I can't stand it in terms of for our students and for our kids. The food distribution that occurred from our staff, Mr. Shahada, thank you, Jessica Trimble, everybody else involved, I went at the end of it. There were like 20 something volunteers. It was nonstop. When I got there, there was a line out the side of the building that I thought was long. And when I was, you know, talked to people, they said it was like double. Mr. Doctor as well, everybody else involved, thank you. Yes, there definitely is a need. And we talk about SNAP benefits. There oftentimes like a perception that there is, you know, it's an unhoused person. It's an unemployed person. There are people, you know, it's based on income, right? Earn income. So, you can get a lot. You can get a little. You can get a medium amount. But these are people, working people, who also receive SNAP, right? And so, it's a big, big need and it was amazing. And thank you to everybody involved in that. And again, this Friday. Went to the School Boards Conference. Great continuing education. That NJ SBA conference is awesome every year with the education that we receive. Hopefully, I've earned my certified board member this in the beginning of the year. Attended the Veterans Parade. Thank you to everybody involved in that. Thank you to our vets. My father was a Korean War veteran, so it's dear and near and dear to my heart. And happy Thanksgiving. Let's practice gratitude. That's it. Good night.
Thank you, Vice President Santiago. Thank you and congratulations to Lial and to Casa for all you do for our students and our community and how important it is to help erase this scourge of vaping that we have upon our children. Congratulations to Commissioner Santiago, Commissioner Brunziak, and welcome to soon-to-be Commissioner Ragsdale. There's an Applebee's fundraiser for School Number Nine on November 19th. It's called Dining to Donate. 10% of your check will go towards School Nine HSA programs. And there's a flyer that you'd need to bring with you at the Applebee's in Clifton Commons. On November 26th at our stadium, there's a free event called Under the Lights in which our Mustang Band will perform their highlights of the season. It starts at 7:00 PM and it also includes a grand finale with typically a few hundred alumni that come back and play with the band. So, if you've never attended it, it's a great warm-up to your Thanksgiving day.
Will you play, Mr. Paris?
I will be there to observe, but my marching days are over. Congratulations to Dr. Chavez and to Ms. Hall. And congratulations to Ms. Rotolo and all the best upon her retirement. And last but not least, to all our families and students and Clifton community. Happy Thanksgiving. Take the time to spend it with your friends, with your family, and give thanks for all that we have today. It's my favorite holiday because it involves eating and friends and not necessarily buying a bunch of gifts for people. All right, that's all I have for this evening. Next would be new business. Is there any new business, Commissioner Brunziak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one note. Somebody told me last week that they alleged that, and he alleged he was a school driver too, that we outsourced the sports teams, go into away games or something like that rather than hiring our own people. So, I want to know if anybody from administration could explain that if that does happen or it doesn't happen, or a rare case if that's possible.
Mr. Shahada can.
Thank you.
Address that.
That is categorically false on a regular basis. For example, when high school team plays Montclair or Patterson or whomever, it's our buses that take them or our drivers. If they, if the students, excuse me, are going on a farther trip, like I know, I think the football team or the soccer team goes to Toms River for like a weekend, they typically charter a coach bus and that is through a private company. But anything that is on a same-night, same-day basis, it is with our drivers.
And that's a booster club that pays for those charter buses or is that allocated?
Those special ones, yes.
Specials.
Special longer trips because efficiency regulations, we are not permitted to pay for a.
Chartered coach bus, yeah.
Thank you.
And we do not charge our booster clubs if they take like a school bus, just for the record.
Okay, anything else in the new business?
Mr. President Paris.
Yes, Commissioner Kenob.
I have two things. One is NJ SBA accepted our resolution we sent in. What's the next steps now?
It will be read. It will be read at the Delegate Assembly, which is, do you remember the date?
It's the Saturday.
Oh, next Saturday. 22nd of November, which is down at Mercer Community College. And there's all the delegates. One delegate from every school district will be there. The resolution will be read. There will be a period of discussion if necessary and then there'll be a vote on it.
Okay.
So, but both of them, to my knowledge, right, have been accepted?
That is correct.
Okay.
Wait, great job on that, board members, that we've never done that in the history of, as far as I know, in the history of the board. Is that right? That never got accepted.
Just for clarification, one of them was for universal free lunches and the other one was for the state DOE, whomever, to pick up the cost on special education, things that are over the student-per-pupil cost.
The real cost of special education.
President Paris, I sit on sub-resolution. So, when I started seeing the emails going back and forth between school boards and administration, I emailed the girl that handles, her name is Ms. Lou, and I recused myself totally out of the meeting. I didn't even go on it because I was just, I felt that was just the wrong thing to do. So, from what I heard from a colleague, that everything went through and it's on the agenda. So, if anybody wants to go, it's a really wonderful process to watch. You can go virtually as well.
Okay. Any other new business?
President Paris, not new business. I just want to apologize. I had thank yous here and I was racing through my stuff, but I just want to thank everybody for voting. And congratulations, Commissioner Brunziak and Mr. Ragsdale. This board has done great things the last three years and we expect that to continue. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahia.
Yeah, I had one thing for new business. When we were down at the School Boards Association, I attended a workshop about AI in the policy. Is there a way that we can probably explore this for our next policy committee, creating that AI based off what they were giving? Because they gave out like a form saying like this is something they're going to be recommending to all school districts and then like school districts can then modify it to what their school needs?
We got the one from Strauss ASME through the state. We have that policy. It's AI policy. Ms. Cuza Levis. We have no objection to it.
I'm assuming it's probably the same one.
Send it my way if you have and I'll make it happen.
Thank you.
We could put it on the policy committee agenda to review. Anything else?
I have something, Mr. Paris.
Yes, Dr. Robertozzi.
We have a couple cheerleaders in the audience who, I'm not going to put them on the spot, so I will give the message that they want to give, but as some of you may know, are Clifton Competition Cheerleaders, our three-time state championship competition cheerleaders. They are aiming to win for the fourth year in a row and are trying to go to Rhode Island for a national competition, which has not happened, which they've never done yet. So, it would be a great opportunity for the team and for Clifton if they did go to represent us, but they do need some help with fundraising. So, it would be greatly appreciated if anyone would like to help out and donate. How would they do those donations, ladies, to the Clifton High School Student Activities? Okay. Okay, please check out the Clifton High School Cheerleading Instagram page for information on how you might donate for our girls. Good luck, ladies.
So, Mr. Paris, I had one other.
Yes, Commissioner Kenob.
So, currently, in that same line of cheer, the NJ SIA doesn't currently recognize cheer as a competitive sport, but a bill was passed to require them to establish it as an inter-scholastic athletic program and create guidelines for it. Now, I know that some high schools are petitioning them to do this, the NJ SIA, and standardize it. Can we look into doing something similar or attaching ourselves to that petition and moving it forward?
So, we can make a resolution drafted and we do have somebody in the district who, I think two people, who have direct ties to the NJ SIA.
I was on the NJ SIA Executive Committee, but my term has expired. However, I think a board resolution would help and give me a little more time, do a little more research. There might be some more we could do regarding that. Here's the thing though, and I don't want to get too detailed because I'm a cheerdad. I have two girls that are cheerleaders. There might be reasons why cheerleading coaches might not want to be part of the NJ SIA. There are some benefits to not being governed by their rules. So, I mean, it's for further discussion, but something maybe we could bring up an education committee and I'll do a little more research.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we do have another executive session this evening. We will be convening to discuss various personnel, student, and contract matters. Action may or may not be taken. I have a motion to go to executive.
Motion.
How long do you think?
Second.
Sorry, one second.
I don't anticipate more than 20 minutes, Mr. Paris, so double that.
It'll be about 40 minutes. Motion to go to executive.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Mahia, seconded by?
Kenob.
Commissioner Kenob. Five-minute break for bathroom. Action will be taken. Five-minute break for bathroom. Action will be taken.
Okay, welcome back from executive session. Roll call please, Mr. Shaw. Excuse me? Motion to return.
Second.
Motion.
Do we need a second?
Who made the original motion?
It was Mr. Siano.
Okay, by Commissioner Siano, second, and by Commissioner Mejia. Roll call please, Mr. Shaw.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack. Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Danny is present. Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Ms. Siano.
Yes.
Ms. Suarez.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
President Perez.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, looking, floor seeks a motion under G, executive session for items number two through
Motion.
Five.
President Perez.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mejia, second by Commissioner Brunsack. Roll call please, Mr. Shaw.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Mejia.
Yes.
Ms. Siano.
Yes.
Ms. Suarez. Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under section H addenda, motion to approve item one.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Brunsack.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Canova. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Dr. Danny.
Yes.
Ms. Mejia.
Yes.
Ms. Siano.
Yep.
Ms. Suarez.
Yes.
Vice President Santiago.
Yes.
President Perez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Siano, Commissioner Mejia, second by Commissioner Suarez. Have a great evening.
We got a special board meeting next Thursday night, Clifton High School.